Hi, good evening, everyone. Welcome to Village Hall. Glad to have you with us. This is the Joint Ad hoc Committee of the Downers Grove Village Council and the Downers Grove Library Board of Trustees. If you're looking for the Parking and Traffic Commission, you're in the wrong room. First item of business is the call in the meeting to order, which I just did. And I'd like to ask to request a roll call, please, because it's on the agenda and I have to follow the agenda.
Commissioner Tully.
Here.
Commissioner Sadoski-Huggett.
Here.
Trustee Kuntia.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Thank you very much. Next item of business is approval of our minutes from our first and last meeting on March 13th, 2025. Are there any amendments or corrections to those minutes? No? Hearing none, we must arm Russell to make a motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve. First meeting.
Awesome. Would you like to second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. No votes, so the minutes are approved. Look at that, we've got something done today. Alright, now we'll move to the meat of our discussion today. And by the way, I think there are copies of the agenda. Are there copies of the agenda? Yes, excellent. So everyone has copies of the agenda, they can follow along with us. Item four, review and discussion of information requested at the March 13th, 2025 meeting. Just by way of introduction, first of all, thank you very much, on behalf of all four of us, for all the information. We will confess that maybe other than Nathan, we haven't all read all 400 some pages. Analyzed it just yet, but we have been through it. And what I think we're going to do is not necessarily try to draw conclusions and decisions or any of that, but maybe identify what else this may have sparked us to want to ask for. If that makes sense, I'll start with Farnaby.
Yeah, I don't really want to start, but what I will say is the profound amount of work that was put into this document is incredible. And whatever you all get paid, I know what it is, but I'm just saying whatever is important. Because, I mean, I was blown away. So, thank you, thank you. I think that if you of us, we have some clarifying questions. There's a couple of things that I need to still pull up. My notes are a little bit of a mess. And I just wanted to follow up on or I didn't quite understand. But I think we'll go through that, right? Probably we'll go through it, we're gonna ask our questions now, or how do you want to?
We can go through it, we can ask questions, whatever you'd like.
Maybe I'll just wait to see what everyone else kind of says.
That's fine. We're ad hoc, we can do that.
Okay, cool. And that's all I have to say, thank you. And thank you all, because it's nice weather outside and here. So, I know the library means a lot to everyone, so that's evident from the fact that you're here on a Thursday night. Thank you.
Now, also one of the biggest overarching questions that I have, and hopefully maybe that'll get the discussion started. And, you know, now that we can talk one-on-one, I know that I had talked with Nathan as well, and we both kind of had this conversation with some of the, and we talked about this as a village as well, with some of the questions related to, it was specifically with the village document, questions 27, 30, 31, 32, and 33. I still want to understand more about how we retained part of our commissioned form of government. That has been a huge discussion about why it is that we can't have an elected board similar to, and I'm looking on page six here, like Westmont, Clarendon Hills, and Hensdale that have a similar form of government that we do, the manager council form of government. And then, from my understanding, we retain some of that commissioned form of government. And I just want to, and in this document, it says a little bit more about how we did have some components of the underlying commission form, but we're not sure which, and we're not sure which pieces are the ones that prevent us from having the elected board. So I think that is one of the big areas that we really need to investigate and understand. How that all came about? Was it a timing issue? Was it, did we specifically choose to retain those pieces so that we could continue to keep it appointed? I think we really need to tease all of that out a little bit more and understand as much as we can. So that's kind of the first area that I think, understanding that history is going to be incredibly important to to this particular committee. So that was kind of the first piece that I think is going to be incredibly important for us moving forward. Just starting there.
Sure. I'll say, I only got through 317 pages. I was worried that Professor Tully was gonna call me and I thought there will be a quiz. The second thing I'll say is I'd like 450 more pages, please. Now, I agree with what Leslie said about the council Q and A and having additional context, having some understanding as to where we lie and how we got to where we are as a village government. And I'd also say that just some general context would be helpful for the community, I think. Like, just what is a council manicure form of government versus a mayor council form of government versus a commissioned form of government? And so just sort of a Q and A about that. As we start thinking about different models for the library board that are under consideration, I think it would be helpful to identify what exactly those are. For example, we've heard about hybrid model. I don't specifically know what that is. I also have heard the Aurora model. Aurora doesn't follow the Aurora model, but we sort of know what that means. So just getting more defrauding contours on those things, I think would be helpful. So I have some questions, but I think they might be kind of detailed. So maybe just sort of direct interaction with staff as to like, these are the questions that we have, that we'd like them to answer by next, might be helpful. I think there's a question that has various sample of the libraries. And I wonder whether that's a misleading data sample. Because of some of the things that Leslie just said, you know, some Illinois municipalities with a council manager form of government have a library as a component unit, but yet have elected trustees. And I think that's a timing issue as to sort of when they did that council manager conversion. But I'm not certain. I'm not an expert here. So, but just having some context for that data, I think would be helpful. But actually, we have broader data now. So the Illinois library trends data, starting on PDF page 24. I would recommend that we filter that data by municipal governance and with community sizes between 30,000 and 70,000 people. I think that would be a more representative sample. I think the majority still have an elected method of selection, but the results would be less skewed in that situation. And then also, of those with the elective method, I noticed a large number of them set the term at six years. We, of course, have just changed our term from four years, sorry, from six years to four years. So I thought that was interesting fact. I don't know whether that's a statutory thing. And then they were uniformly set at seven number of trustees. So I suspect that is a statutory thing for those municipalities with elected method. I think those kind of things are quite relevant if we're discussing potential alternatives to the current process. Is what would that structure look like? And to what extent, would it be required by statute? To what extent would it be something that we could alter? Does that depend on whether we go with some hybrid approach that may require state law exemption? You know, so there are all these different iterations of this that conceivably could occur. Just getting a sort of running list of what those are and what are the constraints within each of those models, I think would be helpful. Scholarly articles, I thought, number one, they're pretty dense, so I doubt the public's reading them. Number two, none of them direct, so far that I've read 317, have directly related to, like, the governing body was not a library. Okay.
I'll scare you from reading the rest, it doesn't get better.
Right. So, you know, city treasurer, a school board,
elected boards.
Public utility commission, et cetera. Okay. Making a point. With that said, I think there's some themes out there that you can say have some applicability. So I don't think it was wasted research, I think it was quite interesting. You know, like, some of the lot ones reminded me of being in law school, so that was nice. I would encourage, I said this sort of, it's a sidebar, would encourage the public to read PDF page 166. Should school boards be appointed or elected? This is an article from 1899. Thought that was interesting reading, it's only one page, so it's manageable. There's a line, "Mares are more apt to place the interests of the schools above party preference than the average broader in the general public." The point there was appointments protect the institution from being negatively influenced by partisan politics. I think the ones, three, four pages that I found most interesting were PDF pages 218 to 221. Why might appointed officials produce better outcomes for constituents? Now, to be fair, again, this was not library boards that were being discussed. It was election officials, like, you know, clerks, supervisors, et cetera. But it had some themes, as I said, that sort of have some relevance to us. So, elections alter the pool of candidates, skills that someone, make someone a good politician may not align closely with the factors that make someone a good public official. I hear a candidate shaking his head. Thank you for putting, you know. Low info and low salient environments can prevent voters from using elections to effectively monitor and sanction poor performance. It's kind of very academic-y, so glad to have that. But elections can create adverse incentives for public officials to make politically motivated decisions that are normatively undesirable. I think frankly, going into this, that was one of my big concerns. But if the trustees were elected, would be really, would we be acting in the best interest of the community or in the library? Or would we be trying to get reelected and therefore sort of do things that perhaps are not good for the institution? So those were some of my takeaways from scholarly articles. I think a lot of the contextual questions not only relate to how the village is governed, but also what are the possibilities for that are under consideration? So as I mentioned, what is the hybrid model? So just getting a definition for what that would be, and whether that even exists, or it's just an intellectual construct. Like, is there anywhere in the whole nation that has a hybrid model? And what, I mean, is the hybrid model something where it's a unit of government, that's just retains the same unit of government, so it's a part of the village, but yet has elections? Or is it, is a hybrid between elections and appointments? I don't even know that basic question as to what that, you know, that's, which of those we're referring to. So I'll pause there. Lot of open questions from my committee.
I can't help but notice that this very ad hoc committee is a hybrid model of some sort.
Yeah, for sure.
No, thank you, a lot of you said some of the same things that I was thinking, and we'll come back to everyone, so this isn't just one of your done. I had a number of questions. First of all, yes, thank you again very much for the information. It was very, very, very helpful, very comprehensive. And did raise a number of questions in my mind, so in no particular order. And at some point, I think all of us will agree that if an ask is disproportionate in terms of the time and effort, sort of raise a hand, say, hold on a minute, do you really want, really want me to spend all that time on this? Because I think that would be something we'd want to know. As opposed to something that is pretty easily attainable. This was great information, particularly the charts and the summaries, that was greatly appreciated. I seem to recall in our last meeting, it's in the minute somewhere, that we also had expressed an interest about libraries outside of Illinois. And again, I understand that might be opening the doors up very, to more work that we really want to sponsor. But if there's some source that in the aggregate would contain that kind of information, I think that would be useful. I think it's one of the things that we identified last time. Is there anything that would be helpful, illustrative, instructive from outside of Illinois that we would want to look at? Just because we've done that before. We've looked for best practices in other places from time to time, that we necessarily adopt them, but they're good benchmarking. So that was one question I had. I had a lot of the same questions about the council manager form of government. And I particularly went, because I had to, read 75 ICLS 5/4-3. And one of the questions I have is, given what that says and what we do, I have lots of questions, my colleagues have raised them. Not just elected versus appointed, also the number of trustees. So one of the questions I have is, and obviously no, this is the answer tonight, it's very similar to what I think you raised, Leslie, is not only the contextual, like, how did we get there in 1962? But also, who decides or how do you decide whether to continue prior elements of a commissioned form of government, even though you're in our council manager form of government? Was there a decision? And who makes that decision? How is that decision made? That would be something I'd be interested in. And that may actually, it occurred to me, require some outside assistance, potentially. But I don't know. But those are all just questions I have. I thought that was fascinating, and I started reading the old compiled statutes and I got carried away. Because I think it's important that as we're talking about, as we are charged with identifying pros and cons and understanding what they are, that would be something I think is very useful to know. So some of the other things that came up in the April 3rd report that we have, and particularly the compiled council questions, there were a number of questions, and the answers were very helpful, and thank you for updating them. And again, because we are charged with looking at what are pros, what are cons, and understanding the cons, and understanding other pros really pros, and the cons really cons. Or can, for example, a con be ameliorated? These are just some questions I have that weren't apparent to me from the report, but I'm sure that we have the answer somewhere. So in no particular order. Why is it that the Downers Grove Public Library is not paid for electricity? I saw that that was a fact, but I just want to say, why? Is that an agreement? Is that a waiver? How does that happen? With respect to issuing bonds, and I'm probably gonna get the language here wrong, so I apologize, but is it, would it be possible, would the Downers Grove Public Library be eligible to take advantage of the village of Downers Grove excess bond capacity? If I'm stating that correctly? There could be an eligibility issue there, or it can't, I don't know. With respect to the section about home rule authority, has the Downers Grove Public Library ever, and I don't have a better way of phrasing this, ever exercised or benefited from the village's home rule authority? I could probably imagine why Leslie could, I'm just not, I just don't know. On the scholarly articles, I also thought they were very helpful, and even though they were not specific to the issue of a library board trustees, which I think what we're all asking is, it would be great if we could find some articles that actually speak to that particular position. But there definitely were some themes, and the one that jumped out at me, and I forget which one it was, was that elected tends to be more geared towards the people who are being represented in the community, where a appointed is more geared towards being the profession. The profession of, in this case, a library is opposed to the community. And those aren't necessarily opposing things, they're just two different flavors of ice cream. That one article just said it very directly, and I think it was picked up in some of the other ones. Although again, in fairness, even that article was not focused on library board trustees, it was in another context. But I think that's a, that's an interesting way to frame it. And that's kind of, I don't know, that's kind of a question. Let's see. And then the rest of my questions have to do with the experts slash consultants on this particular topic, so I'll pause there until we get to that. So we'll go back around and see if there are other questions or comments or requests for information.
Just a thought, I'm on my last, thank you, that. And that makes me think of a question that kind of came up a little bit when we were having our combined meeting is, you know, we talk a lot about kind of the scope of the level of kind of village oversight, whatever, you know, you may have of, you know, can we look at the budget? Can we do X, Y, and Z? And related to that, those scholarly articles of elected community versus appointed profession. And it feels like if we could have, you know, like a positive working relationship between the two boards, could almost have the best of two worlds. If you could have an appointed board who kind of was looking out for that kind of profession, and you could still have an oversight with the village council, you know, the council, that would kind of be that community look. But again, I don't know from statute what it looks like. Could we have any sort of oversight in terms of that? And I don't know if that's what you were thinking of in terms of hybrid, right? Of thinking of it in that way. And so it would be interesting to know with an appointed board kind of where some of those very specific responsibilities lie and what latitude a council could have in terms of kind of some of that too. So that could be an interesting.
Yeah, that's interesting, interesting thought. I had thought of hybrid in that, in that way, but that's, that's an interesting way to think of it. But I definitely see that that one article spoke to. Elected is more political, appointed is more professional. There are pros and cons of both.
Yeah.
The other thing I'd like to say is, you can think about representation in a variety of different ways. One is representation by direct elections, and that reflects the community as a result of the community expressing their voice. You know, I also just think about representation in terms of the demographics. One thing I was just pointing out to Marty today, as we were thinking of the longevity of her life, that she is, you know, a Dave II, you know, representing a certain segment.
Call her Dave II.
I said, and Dave.
And also.
I think there was a comma underneath it.
Okay. They represent a community of Downers Grove who actively use the library.
That probably doesn't run.
Not only, they might not run, but there are other people that might not run. One of the tensions is just simply that some people have a more, a stronger appetite for entering politics than others. You know, Carissa's pointed that out, that she simply wouldn't want to run if she was, and so she wouldn't serve. And yet, she was a great trustee, so, you know, that is one thing you have to think about when you're talking about representation. I think that we also have to think about expertise and whether the current process by appointment allows for the council to make decisions about the right composition of a library board. So when you need a FOIA expert, you can bring in a FOIA expert. When you need a DI, you know, someone with DI experience, you can bring Matt or something, and so on. That if you have public elections, but public's not as well positioned to make those judgments as to what's the right mix of individuals that are on board. Because they're not judging them in relation to one another.
Be careful, a lot of people just made a lot of judgments a couple days ago. I think some of them think they made the right ones.
Well.
I'm just, I'm not. Take that back, rewind.
Two say, two say.
Yeah. I don't know how to comment, I don't know.
So, yeah, all good points.
Well, but there is the danger of people running as slaves. That can create a dysfunctional environment too. I mean, I don't know if we have a problem with that on the school board or not, but I think it's actually an interesting issue as to whether we should be thinking about this in the same terms of the school board. Because one of the points of the articles is that certain governmental bodies have both a legislative and an executive function. And do you want to separate those out? That's why the council manager form exists, and so, you know, you can set policy for them to execute. And yet, a library board does a little bit of both, but also is very much statutorily defined. And so, in some ways, we're not, our policy range is quite narrow and defined by statute. And so, in that sense, we're not really acting as a legislative body. We're just acting sort of, you know, overseeing Julie in the executive function. So I think, and this is one thing that I think an expert can weigh in on, is, is there a good analogy between how libraries function and how schools function? Because there's a lot of research around schools. And and also, that's one of the arguments, so having talked to Commissioner Davenport, and that is part of his underlying theory, is having a servant on the school board, and the school board being a body that, you know, sort of has taxing authority and so on. But he thinks they are analogous, and therefore, the, you know, that's why we should be elected. So hearing whether experts agree with that analysis would be something I'd be interested in knowing.
Before we get too much further into the merits, let's go back into fact-finding mode. And are there other things that the information that's been gathered has inspired us to ask more of or more about?
I also had a question about the government, but I think all of us seem to have had that same conversation. I also wanted to know, if we become a district, can we expand our service area? I wasn't sure, so I was wondering about that. And then, this is sort of a random question, but if we were to be an elected board and separate entities, and right now, I know the village provides all these services to us, but could the village charge us? And if they would charge us, how much would that be? Those are just kind of questions that are floating in my head. They're not concrete questions yet, because we haven't gotten to that point, but I think those are all things that we need to look at when we think about cost and
Yeah.
eventual tax increases and whatever it's gonna be, but it's wonderful, the village does provide all these things, but if the village continues to provide them, will they be at a cost? And that district question, that was, was the, or service area, something that I, you know, Julia, if you could tell me that.
I think it would be good to have an inventory of the intra-governmental agreements between the village and the library. You know, we have a lease, we have an arrangement that allows for us to get electricity for free. I think it's free, I know. So I want to think. So, so just knowing what entanglements there are under the current arrangement would be helpful to know to understand if we did become a district library, what would have to get renegotiated.
No, I have a question, but it's not related to that, so I'm gonna make sure you finish your statement before.
No, that's it, I paused.
Okay.
Great.
It's unrelated to that, but one thing that popped into my head when we were discussing things is, as, I mean, we were talking about kind of digging into that the chart of data, I need to go back. Of the libraries and trying to
Of the libraries and trying to kind of narrow it down to the ones that were between the 30,000 to 70,000 population at a municipal form of government. It would also be helpful, and this might be too much information, and again, be one of those things where we might have to kind of outsource it, but it would also be helpful to know the timing and the, and the rationale for if this was ever changed and why. So for example, because we know some municipalities change to that major council form of government, did they become elected because they made that, that change to that form of government? And not because they wanted it to be elected, or, you know, vice versa? I mean, you know, there's a whole host of reasons why some of these things might have happened, so kind of knowing the timing and maybe the context behind how all of these things happen might be beneficial as well. Because there's, you know, I mean, we can take a look at this and, and say, oh, all of these are elected, but it, it might not have been a choice, it might just have been a side effect of something else that happened too. So just to have the kind of the complete dataset, it would be good. And hopefully, if we kind of narrow down some of those municipalities that are closer to our size, hopefully it would not be a horrendous dataset to take a look at.
Yeah, I, I agree with that statement, I have the same idea.
Any other information requests related to what we have already? I'm sure we'll add more, but not at the moment. Do we want to move on to five, which is a discussion of action items, next steps, which I think the consensus was to talk about the outside experts that have been identified, there's been four by my count. And maybe talk a little bit about what we think of those, understanding we're not making any decisions today. Are there others that we should seek out? Questions about what else can we know about these folks, types of questions about availability and willingness and cost and all that, but I think we need to decide that right now. And then, the last thing would be perhaps starting to sketch out the scope of what we would want them to do. If that makes sense, who wants to start?
I think we need to know what we want them to do exactly, to figure out exactly what white people would also be. Right? I mean, yeah, it seems like, yeah, some of them.
Well, I mean, to kind of run off the bat, it seemed like Sheldon Nomo would probably, it seemed like his scope was not quite library-specific anyway, so I feel like that one probably would not be quite as applicable. When I was kind of scrolling through, or even really looking too much even into local governments. It seemed like if, if we were kind of going between the, that academics, it seemed like Christopher Barry would be a better fit. To kind of some of the nuances of the local government and potentially libraries and in terms of like elections. When I was looking through this background, I didn't really see anything that kind of stuck out to me that would be particularly relevant to what we were, what we were looking for.
Yeah, and this scholarly article was really about a constitutional law theory.
Right. Yeah, it's got like constitutional law first amendment.
Yeah. The analogy between law and reapportionments and whether that sort of creates a constitutional right to elections. And again, not specific to library boards, it was just sort of about election officials.
One element that jumped out at me was the academic versus in the trenches experience aspect of Joe Philippeck, whom I don't know at all, but it just was intriguing to jump out at me as somebody who's been on both sides of the fence.
He was interesting to me as well.
Yeah, and involved in the whole Aurora thing, it just seems like there's a lot of real world experience that might be relevant. I don't know, one of my questions is, I haven't read all their scholarly articles, and I know if we were hiring an expert, we would go get all their articles and we could read them, but we're not going to do that.
Right.
But some, some additional time or opportunity to look at some of the things that they've put out would be helpful, but I, that, that practical experience just jumped out at me as being, not that academics aren't very important, but it just seems to be dripping with, I've, I've been there, done that.
I, I agree.
Yeah, I was also interested in his experience as well. Yeah, the three that kind of stuck out to me were, of course, you know, Professor Shokin, Christopher Barry, and Joe Philippeck, those were kind of the three that stuck out to me that I had, feel like I would like to get a little bit more information for.
Yeah. And I think I've discussed with a couple of you, like, potentially we could be hiring one expert, potentially we could be hiring two, I mean, it really depends on the criteria, scope, right?
Yeah, depending on a lot of the questions.
That goes back to your point about maybe define scope in order to put together something that staff can actually craft into some kind of, not, not that we're going to go out for RFP and lowest responsible bid or anything like that, but I do think we want to provide, I mean, I guess, assuming our colleagues would want us to provide some options and some context around those options. Different, I'm assuming there'll be some range in price so that they understand what they're getting themselves into before they approve them. So what, what do we want to do in terms of additional information? I agree with what's been said. It, it doesn't make sense to try to find out, before we get to scope, to try to find out availability and cost. Like, I don't know if these folks are available, I don't know if they do what we're, what we have in mind, I don't, I'm not sure we, we know what we want them to do just yet. Or what they bill by the hour, or just some basic information like that might be helpful, because some of them might roll themselves out.
Yeah.
Downers Grove, I'm not doing any work for them. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Does that make sense? More importantly, does it make sense to you?
Library and both staff to do that, I'm sure.
Thank you. Scope. Now, I don't think we're going to decide this today, nor do we need to decide this today, but hey, let's start a conversation about what we would want them to do. I mean, you've already touched upon some things, Nathan.
Yeah, and I talked to two of you about, about this. I, I think it would be more productive to have a controlled environment than to have congressional hearing style interaction with them.
I wouldn't do that, they won't do it if we do that.
Professor Shokin, having talked to him, probably would. But life would, man, so, with that said, he's at Northwestern, which is downtown, right, in Strayville, so maybe from a practical standpoint, that's not respectful of his time. So, uh, and I don't think this needs to be a spectacle, I actually think it needs to be a very defined process, which gives all of us an opportunity to sort of synthesize what questions we want to direct towards them and them to give us thoughtful answers that they can inform our decision, our, our finding. So from my perspective, having sort of a Q and A approach would, would be appropriate.
Are you contemplating that it would be a deliverable in the form of some report at the end, or more of a pick their brain type of opportunity?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it could be recorded testimony or something, but not in front of the whole public. But I, I don't know how we would pick their brain. I do know that having had a conversation with Professor Shokin, Matt, Matt's, Matt's initial conversation was that we would be the ones that would be drafting the report, so I think they were contemplating a situation where he was providing some sort of oral testimony. And that we were then putting Matt into writing.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out what the, the engagement would look like, would it be then, I've got to get through this spitballing here, would it be an hourly engagement where we would have so many hours?
He had a, I mean, he contemplated a fixed fee retainer.
And then so many hours or something that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly didn't get that far with him, I was negotiating sort of the terms.
Well, no, and I'm sorry, I'm not saying specifically Professor Shokin, but what are you contemplating, that whoever would be engaged, would they, either fixed fees or on all of the bases, or were we an opportunity to engage them, get some input, and then we would reflect an input in a report?
Yeah, I, I, if it was a fixed fee, I think we should have a very defined scope of work so that we know we're getting our, our money.
Yes.
If, if it's an hourly thing, then I think we need to set, sort of, also set a scope of work so that we don't, it doesn't get excessive and exceed between, you know, the budgetary authority discretionary or non-discretionary, so in either case, I, I think we need to memorialize this in writing in ahead, in advance with whoever we are ending up hiring.
Well, sure, there would have to be some kind of written engagement, which would have a not to exceed or a fixed fee or an hourly rate, and then it would be responsible on us to make sure that we were also operating within the parameters of that engagement. And if, if the engagement is, we get to have so much time with you and ask you questions, you provide us input, and they're going to do so many hours of something to provide us information, we'll have to figure out how to define that.
Sure.
It's one thing if you go to, if anybody in this room, there's some defined deliverable for a negotiated fee, just making sure that we're very transparent of what it is we're paying, what we're getting, and the most important, that we get what we expect.
Yeah, so I've had a conversation with Professor Shokin. Matt had an earlier conversation in December. Matt discussed a fee with him, I just confirmed that amount. So that, like, I knew it wasn't like way out of bounds, you know?
Sure.
So I, I think I do not have enough information about sort of where they got to that number, how they got to that number.
Understood, I was just sort of picking your brain.
Yeah, so I suspect that the professor had an idea that this is going to be five, 10, you know, hours of my time, and so therefore I'm going to quote you X.
Okay, that's, thank you, that's very helpful, that sort of sounds to me then as part of the question of, are you available, are you willing? Obviously, you know, some people are, or even what they would recommend be the form of engagement and how they would be compensated and what the deliverables be, I think it would be helpful to us as well, so. Yeah, I wasn't trying to decide that today, just to get a better, better understanding.
And then maybe the professor has a different, different approach than the guy from Rails and Aurora, you know, so.
What are thoughts?
I don't know about Christopher Barry's background, but I am kind of intrigued to get someone from University of Chicago. You know, the University of Chicago thought, externalities, free market, libertarian thinking, I think if, if it was a counterpoint to Professor Shokin, I think that would actually be interesting. It would be, that's why I went from both here and, you know.
We're not paying for a Monte Carlo analysis.
Yeah, I don't do our Monte Carlo analysis.
Any thoughts on this topic? I know we've already asked for a bunch of stuff. Anything that we've identified so far that isn't clear or needs explanation?
Don't know if you want to hear some of the feedback about, uh, one of the, about some of the things that you've asked for at this point. Because I can tell you right now
Sure.
that there is no clear account of information for the way libraries are selected in other states. So that would be a one state at a time
Right.
going through it. However, we do have someone who is kind of an expert on that, John Trasko from Every Library works on ballot measures throughout the United States with libraries of all kinds, and so he's kind of the expert guy on that, on what different states are doing and how, how they run, how their libraries are elected or appointed, how their funding mechanisms work, so. And the best thing is that Every Library is a non-profit, and he would be willing to come forth for it. And similarly, Philippeck as the assistant director of Rails, that would also be a free resource to us, so.
I've heard John Trasko speak like six times, and he knows his stuff, like the man, he, he, he's like the, the Julie and Dave of all the libraries. Like, he just knows, he has like tons of information and it's like, and he's, and free is always my favorite.
And he is a former library trustee from Irwin.
Oh, cool. You're better. Thank you.
So just building on that, I'll just check in for clarity, correction. Professor Shokin, Professor Barry, Mr. Philippeck, and Mr. Trasko. That those are the folks that we will be reaching out to to answer those fundamental questions, sorry.
I think that's right, although it sounds like Mr. Trasko could actually answer some other questions too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Something might be a, particularly, you know, given that it doesn't drain our budget to ask. Our non-existent budget. Makes sense?
Some, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else that we've raised or asked that doesn't make sense or causes you grief? Other than being here on Thursday.
We'll follow the normal protocols, if we get into this and find any issues, we'll let the forecomers know right away. Just keep you posted as we go in between now and next year.
Perfect, thank you. Before we move to item six, scheduled for future meetings, anything else on our next steps and discussion of the information that anyone wants to address? Okay, then on next meetings, we have a little work to do on scheduling, but I believe that we have dates in May and June that are all Thursdays that were available. If I'm not mistaken, I believe, May 29th, June 5th, and June 26th, they're all good for all four of us. Let's put those on calendar, if that's okay with everyone, so we have them. We would like to meet again in April if possible, but I think we need to do a little bit of work to find a date, it doesn't necessarily have to be a Thursday, but rather than everyone staring at calendars in front of all you good people. If it's okay, we'll just do that offline, figure, figure a date that we can maybe towards the end of April, since we're meeting in April now.
You said May 29th, June 5th.
June 5th and June 26th.
26th. Yep, I'm surprised.
And we can continue to be flexible, understanding everybody has lives, and we are an ad hoc committee, so we can be ad hoc as long as we give everyone plenty of notice. So we'll try to look last couple, the last half of April to see if we can get together, and a part of that will depend on what, how long it's going to take to get some of this stuff, if you tell us that it's going to take more than two weeks, there's no reason for us to meet unless we think there's a reason to meet, but I would just then disagree with myself, we probably ought to find a date in April, and we don't think we're ready for it, we can obviously skip it. I'd rather have a date on calendar, if you think so.
I agree.
So we'll try to see if we can find it, we'll try to see if we can find another date yet in April. And that'll give us the next four meetings we should be at. Makes sense? Okay. All right, moving right along then, here to everyone's favorite card of the evening, that is item seven, our agenda, which is poll of comments. This is the point in the evening where we welcome you, who have been patiently listening to us, to come up and share anything that you have on your mind related, once again, to the narrow focus of this ad hoc subcommittee, which is about looking at pros and cons of potential elected versus appointed library boards of trustees, and any other issues concerning either the library board of trustees, general business, or the Downers Grove Village Council's general business. We would respectfully request that you raise during our meetings. That having been said, we welcome your, your comments, please feel free to come up to the podium. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, my name is Marty Slinick, resident crone on the library. I just wanted to apologize to this body for having interrupted from the audience when Nate was talking about me.
No need. But my fault. Other questions or comments from members of the audience? Good evening, welcome.
Hi, Paul, I think, you know, I mean, last time I made a comment, I'm suggesting that you should really spend some time thinking about the reason or what, what you're trying to achieve here. I still think that's true, but I was giving some additional thought, and you know, I was thinking, maybe that's difficult to pin down to a specific thing you're trying to do, and maybe it's a more broad-based kind of, we want to make the world a better place, and therefore based kind of, we wanna make the world a better place, and therefore we're, and look for opportunities, and you could find things and say, ah, this is pros and cons. Even in that case though, you know, some of the examples brought up that, uh, some of the alternatives could lead to dysfunctional behavior. Most people would hear that and say, well, that would be a bad thing, but I think there's some people that would say, well, that would be a good thing. So, I think it, if you can't get to a point of saying this is the problem we're trying to solve, perhaps you could spend some time saying, what's the criteria that would be useful to judging whether one alternative is better than another? Just trying to, and the criteria, there could be multiple ones, and they don't even have to be consistent, because it could be a balance. You could say, you know, on the one hand, we want it to be responsive to new issues that come up. On, on the other hand, we also want it to be something with some enduring values and consistency over time. And clearly those can conflict, but you wanna strike the balance, and I think just sort of laying out those kind of criteria would then help. And then when you say, we don't want it to make it more dysfunctional, you know, that, I think that would be a good clarification in terms of, uh, trying to make sure you're finding the right information and presenting our things to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments, phone the audience. Very good, thank you again for being here tonight, we really appreciate it. It's so much better when we have, uh, people here with us, uh, as we do this. And again, once we have our, uh, next April meeting scheduled, we'll obviously put a notice out, we'll figure that out. Very good, well, anything further? Anyone wants to add? Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're adjourned, thank you and good night.